I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, a disembodied Ms. Harper-Peterson. That's awesome. She's here somewhere.
In Nevada.
She's everywhere. So, prior to roll call, I'd like to make clear for the record of this meeting that, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that at least a portion of this planning commission meeting is being conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953 in that Planning Commissioner Angela Harper-Peterson is located at Starbucks 1201 Penny Lane, Penny Lane, south of 180 Fernley, Nevada, and will be attended by speakerphone through Skype. In accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act, the teleconference location has been identified in the agenda for this meeting. I'd ask that staff now conduct a roll call, after which I'll ask Commissioner Harper-Peterson a few questions to confirm certain matters for the record.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Commissioner Bergman is absent this evening. Vice Chair Bradley?
Present.
And Chair Silberman?
Present. So, Ms. Peterson, if you would please respond to the following questions. Can you hear me well?
Yes, I can.
Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Have you posted the agenda at the location where you're located?
Yes.
Is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes.
Are there any members of the public there with you who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting or otherwise address any agenda item for this meeting?
No.
Next, I would like to ask that any member of the planning commission speak up at this time if such member has not been able to clearly hear Commissioner Harper-Peterson. Seeing none, the comments shall reflect that all planning commissioners present have indicated that they were able to hear Commissioner Harper-Peterson. I would next request that any planning commissioner speak up at this time if such commissioner has any reason to believe based on voice recognition or otherwise that the person representing themselves to be Commissioner Harper-Peterson is not truly so. Seeing none, the records should reflect that no planning commissioner has expressed doubt of any kind that Planning Commissioner Harper-Peterson is the person participating in my teleconference with planning commissioners present here. Any votes taken during the teleconference portion of this meeting must be taken by roll call. With that, is there anyone here to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? This public item, public comment item, is designed to give folks an opportunity to speak to an item that is not on the agenda. If you're here to speak on an item that is on the agenda, I'll ask you to speak during the time that agenda item is being discussed. Anyone here to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is approval of the September 18th, 2017 Planning Commission Minutes. Does anyone have any corrections to the minutes?
I do have a correction. I was actually not at the meeting, but on page three it said I voted yes on two motions regarding 360 Industrial Road. I think it was meant to indicate that Commissioner Gutierrez had voted yes on those two motions.
You're not here today.
I was really not here for that one.
All right, okay. Any other changes to the minutes? I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes with those two changes.
I so moved.
Second.
Second, all right. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Abstain.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
And Chair Silberman?
Yes. All right, moving on to the public hearing. I am now going to read the procedure for public hearings. Staff will report, present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with staff's recommendations. The applicant may then make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. We ask that speakers fill out a speaker's form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary, which I believe is Ms. Porras. Prior to addressing the commission, the speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. And I don't have any speaker forms yet, and there are a lot of people here, so if you do intend to speak, I would ask you to seriously consider filling one of those out. And with that, I believe staff has a presentation. Oh, I guess I need to identify the item. I guess we're doing the general plan land use map correction and zoning district map correction for 10 properties on the west side of Elm Street, APN 045311-0702160.
Thank you and good evening. I'm Laura Russell with the Planning Division. I'm presenting the proposed general plan land use map correction and associated zoning district map correction for you tonight. It's in regards to 10 properties, as mentioned, on the west side of Elm Street. The address range is 18 through 98 Elm Street and all of the APNs listed on the screen and in your staff reports. Subject properties are shown here, both in today's zoning map as well as the Google overhead image. They are located north of Hole Drive, close to the northern city limits. The properties are currently developed with duplexes and one fourplex. They're small multifamily buildings located across the street. In response to a public document request, staff began research on the properties and their current and past land use classifications. In our research, we found that the properties had multifamily zoning back to at least 1954 and up to 2009. They were in the R3 district, which allowed multifamily housing units and expressly allowed apartments. The boundary between the R3 and the R1 districts in those days ran behind the subject properties down the middle of the block. It was located there for many decades. We reviewed the previous general plan land use map and found that the properties had a designation of multiple family high density, which allowed 40 to 80 units per acre. The historic map was actually handmade in the old-fashioned way of cutting out pieces of lines and pieces of pattern and put down onto a page, and it was, to be honest, relatively difficult to read. During the general plan land use update process, that old paper map was converted into an electronic map. In this transition, we can see that the subject properties were accidentally shown as single family instead of multifamily. The mapping error was carried forward through the general plan update process. When the general plan was adopted in 2009, the properties had been designated as single family, and so that is their current land use designation. On this map, they are shown as yellow inside the red dotted line when they should have been the brown multifamily color that's across the street. The comprehensive zoning ordinance update took place right after the zoning, I mean, the general plan update, and so that error was carried forward because, as you know, the zoning map has to be consistent with the general plan land use map. And we were thoughtful about how a mistake like that could have happened, and we've done the research that we can and looked at all of the records, and we approximate that it was probably just because the line was drawn down the middle of the street, which is a standard in common convention when creating zoning district boundaries. But in this particular case, it should have been drawn down the middle of the block, similar to what's actually happening across the street there, as you can see in this So, prior to 2009, the general plan land use was multiple family high density, again, which allowed 40 to 80 units per acre. Currently, with the error, the current density is limited to six units per acre, that's single family. So, if there was a new development proposed on one of these lots, it would be limited to just one single family home. The proposed correction would change it back to multiple family, and the designation would be medium density, which allows 21 to 59 units per acre. So, there has been some change in terminology between the old general plan and the current general plan. So, that category used to be called high density, and now in the new scheme of things, that is a medium density land use designation. So, that's kind of the one distinction that I wanted to point out to you. It's not quite exactly the same language, but it is a similar density range and reflects the changes that were made to all of those high density areas to medium density during the general plan update. So, that would be the areas that are shown, again, on the brown and the land use map. So, staff sent the legal notice with a cover letter that was explaining the proposed corrections to all the property owners within 300 feet of all of the subject properties as well as to the tenants of the sites in question. We received only two inquiries. One was for a trustee of one of the nearby properties, just wanted to confirm that the property that they were overseeing was not within the subject areas, so I corresponded with them. And the second was from a property owner of one of the properties that is within the subject area. She asked questions about the process and what had happened in the past, and I answered those. She expressed concern about how the neighborhood might change if the duplexes were demolished and larger apartment buildings were constructed in their place, but she did not expressly support or oppose these proposed map corrections when we were on the phone together. So, there are two resolutions before the commission this evening. The first recommends the change to the general plan land use map and a second corresponding correction to a map within the housing element, and that's required because our general plan, as you know, has to be internally consistent. So, we would have to make that one small correction in the housing element as well. And the second is a correction of the zoning district map to change the subject properties to RM 59 to be consistent with the corrected general plan designation. If you made those recommendations, then the corrections would be heard next by the city council for their consideration. If you would like or decide to recommend the map corrections this evening, these are the two motions that you would make. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have. I believe that the property owner that originally brought this to our attention is here this evening, and I have the historic maps and documents if you have any questions about those. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff?
No.
Angela?
No, I don't have any questions. It seems like a straightforward correction.
I don't have any speaker slips for this item, so I'm assuming there's no public comment. So, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please? Oh. You can bring up your speaker slip and you can make a statement. We haven't voted on closing the public hearing yet. No reason to apologize.
I am the gentleman who asked for the inquiry as to what was going on because I used to own Uptown Cafe in San Carlos, which I sold, which is now Spazo, because I had to take care of my mother, and I took care of my parents for 26 years, and I've lived here for over 30. And my mother passed away on October 15th, 2015. So, I cleaned up the duplex, did some remodeling, et cetera, cleaning up, repainting, and I put it on the market towards the end of April. And I couldn't get any offers, and I asked my realtor why. And so, she asked some of the realtors that were inquiring about it, and they told her, "Well, it's single family zoned." And I said, "What are you talking about? This is a multifamily area. Where are you coming from?" Nobody ever asked my parents to get the zoning changed. Nobody ever informed them. Nobody ever informed me, and I've been living there for 30 years, and I took care of everything for my parents. So, my realtor said I would have to make a request to do the research, so I made the request. And thank you to Laura, who just gave you the presentation. She did a lot of research and put a lot of effort into this and found out it was a simple mistake when they went from manual labor to digital and just simply left out the color coding. And so, I would ask you kindly, because I've already lost $400,000 in time and offers that I couldn't get off what it was worth to sell it, and I have three siblings, to be so kind and approve this correction and, you know, ask the city council to be so kind and approve the correction so that it's back to what it should have been in the first place. So, I thank you kindly. I also know that Mr. Rubens is behind it 100% to making the correction, so I appreciate all the help that I have received from the city planning group as well as from Mr. Rubens. I hear a lot of bad things about City Hall, but I'll tell you, I've had nothing but...
They will take the compliment.
I've had nothing but good experiences with the people that I've interacted. I thank you kindly.
That's on video, and it's going to be spliced together many, many times over the years, I'm sure. I believe there's a motion and a second pending to close the public hearing. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
And Chair Silberman?
Yes. Any discussion among the commission?
No.
I would entertain a motion, or two.
I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council to approve a general plan land use map correction to designate 10 properties on Elm Street with addresses and assessors' parcel numbers enumerated in the resolution to multiple family medium density based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
I'm guessing that the city attorney wants us to take these separately.
Yes, we should. They're two separate resos.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
And Chair Silberman?
Yes. Is there another motion?
You started it.
I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending city council approval of a zoning district map correction to designate the 10 properties on Elm Street with addresses and assessors' parcel numbers enumerated in the resolution to RM 59, multiple family, multifamily, medium density based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silberman?
Yes. Thank you. I just noticed, I didn't actually notice this until this moment, that we notice people in Belmont if they're within the radius. How interesting. Okay.
They should do the same for us.
I guess, yeah. Well, I'm the last house in San Carlos, right on the border of Belmont, and I've never gotten a notice from Belmont that Belmont was doing anything. Very interesting. All right, the next item is a regulation of commercial cannabis activities amendments to the zoning ordinance. And just for the record, I'd like to note that in my day job, I am an attorney for the county of San Mateo. The county of San Mateo is also exploring how, if at all, it's going to regulate cannabis, and I have been assigned by the county council to coordinate that effort in that capacity. I have coincidentally met with city staff on a couple of occasions where they were at meetings that I was also at, but, I mean, there's no conflict, and I am here today solely as a planning commissioner and not as a lawyer.
That's a lot of legalese there.
Yeah, well, you know, consider the source.
Thank you and good evening, commissioners. My name is Martin Romo, Economic Development Coordinator, and before you this evening is a resolution recommending city council adopt amendments to regulate commercial cannabis activities within Title 8 zoning of the municipal code. As part of this packet for this item, two additional documents were included for informational purposes only. These were the proposed amendments to the Health and Safety Code and the business taxes, licenses, and regulations. These are not part of today's discussion, rather, these will be addressed at the city council first reading of that ordinance on October 23rd. To present this item, I'd like to introduce the city's consultant, Tanya Sundberg from Placeworks.
Chair Silberman and members of the commission, my name is Tanya Sundberg. I'm with Placeworks. We've been working with staff and SEI Consulting Group to draft regulations for commercial cannabis activities. With me here tonight is Neil Hall from SEI and Sonia Ortega from SEI as well. So, if you recall, we came before you last August with a study session item to talk, to give you some background on what's happening at the state level with commercial cannabis regulations and what that means for the city and what the prior city council direction has been. So, today, we're here before you with the draft zoning ordinance amendments, and we're requesting your action to recommend that the city council adopt those amendments related to commercial cannabis activity. And as Martin mentioned, the city council is also going to be considering some related amendments in Title 8 Health and Safety and Title 5 Business Taxes, Licenses, and Regulations. And so, those are included as part of your packet so you can kind of understand the context of everything that's going to be considered by the city council. First, just some kind of refresher on the background information, what's happening at the state level and also what, how San Carlos residents view this issue. In 2015, the state passed the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, and that really kind of established some clear regulations for medical cannabis activity. That was followed in last fall in 2016 with Prop 64, the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, or AMUA, and that authorized non-medical or recreational cannabis use, and that was supported by 65% of San Carlos voters. And then, earlier this year, the state legislature passed SB 94, which is the Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, or MACURSA. And what that does is kind of align the, or integrate the medical and non-medical regulations at the state level, also the license types that the state will be issuing for cannabis activity. Also, earlier this year in the summer, the city council directed staff to conduct a Shape San Carlos poll, and in that poll, the results showed that 80% of the respondents, which were 221 residents, support legalized cannabis. At the local level, the state law allows local governments to regulate cannabis activity for personal cultivation, which is defined as up to six plants per dwelling unit. The state law allows cities and counties to reasonably regulate but not ban personal indoor cultivation. Cities and counties can regulate, including ban, outdoor cultivation at a personal, for a personal scale. And then, looking at commercial cannabis businesses, the state law allows local governments to adopt business and/or land use regulations for commercial cannabis activities. And the five kind of major activity types that are addressed in the state law are retail and delivery, cultivation, manufacturing, testing, and distribution. So, the city council has talked about this topic. They had three study sessions last March, April, and June, and based on the discussion and information... And based on the discussion and information that was presented, the city council gave staff direction to draft regulations that would ban commercial cannabis activity within 600 feet of residential zones, ban activity within mixed-use zones, and ban retail activity. And then the city council also directed staff to prepare draft regulations for manufacturing, distribution, testing, nurseries, and microbusinesses. And microbusinesses are, is a type of state license that you can get that kind of integrates a couple of the major other activities, including manufacturing, distribution, and cultivation up to 10,000 square feet. The state license does include a retail component of microbusinesses as well, but in San Carlos here, because of the council's decision about not allowing retail at this time, the microbusiness regulations that we're preparing would exclude retail activity. And I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on what those activities are. We covered that fairly well at our last study session, but certainly if you have questions, go ahead and bring them up. So in this section, I'm going to go into more detail about the draft zoning amendments before you today and start, we're going to start with the use classifications. Our kind of general goal with these zoning amendments were to try to streamline the changes and use the structure and format of your existing zoning code and try to fit within that, rather than trying to reinvent the wheel and create something entirely new just for cannabis. So with that in mind, our first step was to look at the license types that are addressed in the state law under MACURSA, and we compared those to the use classifications that are in the existing San Carlos zoning ordinance. And you can see how they align in this table. The first category under the state license type is cannabis nurseries. That's a kind of subcategory under the general larger category of cultivation. So for nurseries, that fits fairly well within the city's nurseries and garden centers use classification. We do propose some amendments to that use classification to make sure that we're fully aligned with the state requirements, and I'll go over those on the next slide. Moving on to the next two, manufacturing, the state law has two license types for manufacturing. Type one is manufacturing with non-volatile solvents, and type two is using volatile solvents. Both of those fit within the city's industry general use classification with really just a minor amendment proposed about just kind of stating explicitly that that's, cannabis manufacturing is covered by that use classification. Testing is a state license type that fits very well within research and development without any modification. Distributor is a license type that fits within the city's wholesaling and distribution use classification without modification. And then the last two rows in the table show state license types that are not well addressed in the city's zoning ordinance, and so we propose new use classifications for those. The first is that microbusiness use type that I described before. It includes up to 10,000 square feet of cultivation, distribution, manufacturing, and explicitly says that retail sales are not a component of that use classification. And then the last category is the state license type for retailer. We propose including a new use classification specific for cannabis retail sales called cannabis dispensary. And the reason we propose adding that is just so that we can be very explicit that that is a prohibited use in all of the zoning districts.
So there are no agricultural zones in San Carlos?
There, I need to check. Do you have an answer to that?
I can answer that. There are none.
Okay. And is there anywhere in San Carlos where commercial, non-retail greenhouses are permitted?
There are, I think that's something that I'm actually just about to get into is the permitting, and there are some places where a use classification that we're using for cannabis activity is a permitted, that's permitted in some zones where the city council would not like to see that activity. And so we are adding kind of footnotes to the use tables, the permitting tables, to say, while, you know, while this mixed-use zone may allow nurseries and garden centers, cannabis nurseries are not permitted. So it's kind of a footnote added to the use table.
I see, I mean, I see where nurseries and garden centers are defined, and it looks like, it looks like the proposal is only to allow cannabis starts, right? But what I'm wondering is, is it possible, under the existing code, to set up a greenhouse, you know, in other areas of the city? And are we expressly prohibiting the cultivation of cannabis in locations where greenhouses can go?
That's something, I think that we could certainly look into that. I think that, basically, I think you're proposing a similar approach to what we just described for retail, so making it very explicit that cultivation that's not part of a microbusiness is a prohibited use. Is that kind of what you're suggesting?
I mean, I'm not proposing anything. I'm just trying to understand, because, I mean, I see the discuss, I was surprised not to see a discussion of greenhouses or grows in a warehouse facility, because there are all sorts of folks who are proposing, are proposing to develop cannabis cultivation either in warehouses with grow lights or in greenhouses. And this is a high, a high-income industry, so I just wanted to make sure that it was contemplated, and I just didn't see anything in here that addressed that issue.
Mr. Chairman, could I get a little bit of clarification, maybe make a comment? I think what, maybe you understand this, and I just didn't understand your question correctly, but this would permit, is my understanding, is cultivation inside buildings within the zones that it's allowed in. So you can do the grows inside the buildings, right?
Yeah, under the microbusiness.
So that's what this would permit, but only in the zones that it's permitted in these manufacturing and industrial zones that we're showing on the map and noted here. But what, is that what you're asking?
Okay, so you're, so basically, folks can do cannabis grows, not just starts?
That's correct, under the microbusiness use classification, and it has a cap of 10,000 square feet.
Okay.
Inside these manufacturing or warehouse facilities in the industrial zones?
And we're allowing both warehouse, this ordinance would allow both warehouses and greenhouses? Both?
The word greenhouse is not addressed here.
It's often referred to as mixed light, because it's basically, it doesn't require necessarily grow lights, although they'll use grow lights and mixed light as well.
We have a requirement that the cannabis cultivation must occur indoors, and so I think maybe we could define that, but I think to me that meant kind of inside a building or a structure.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And that's the intent?
Well, no, it's just, there's a very big difference between a greenhouse mixed-light grow and a warehouse grow, because a warehouse grow is going to require a lot more electricity. It's going to require potentially a lot more ventilation. It's going to require a lot of different things that a greenhouse grow might not require. But...
And I think what our intent was is to allow both.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, and Neil maybe could talk to the specifics or the differences between the two facilities and whether or not, I mean, that's my understanding, is we intended to not regulate the type of grow it was, just to say you could do it.
Okay.
And to answer your question, actually, we were directed in the very beginning to allow indoor-only, no mixed-light growing. But mixed-light growing would certainly be a possibility in those areas. It's just not the direction we were given in the very beginning. So there have been some changes since we started, but I'm familiar with the mixed-light growing as well. But that's up to you.
And mixed light is outside, right? So some indoor, some outdoor, is that not right?
Light is actually, typically, it's done indoor, but with a combination of artificial lighting and natural lighting. So typically, what you see is either a glass dome or an open dome over an enclosed building that opens up to allow sunlight in part of the time so that the amount of electricity used for the lights is, the commissioner says, is lessened. They don't have to do as much of it. They can open up the top to allow natural light in. And there are actually regulations that were promulgated by CDFA that were withdrawn when '94 was done that indicated exactly how much light you have.
It's a particularly, a particular license under the state law, and it's, I mean, it's greenhouses, is what it is. It's indoor, but it's a greenhouse that, you know, has the ability to, well, not the ability, it's designed to allow natural light in. But it's fine. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, I mean, I'm curious now. You've piqued staff's interest, because maybe Neil mentioned that you were directed to not allow that? And so that's what got into the codes, right?
Correct, right, and that is what's in the code.
Yeah.
Indoor only.
But my question would be, can a warehouse have glass and still be enclosed?
Well, I don't think that's mixed light. So mixed, mixed light, these are...
Industry terms?
Yeah. I mean, it's, there are two different licenses. They're both indoor, neither are outdoor. One is in a greenhouse, and one is in an enclosed warehouse. And there are advantages and disadvantages to both, but from an environmental standpoint, a mixed-light greenhouse is significantly more environmental than a warehouse, because a warehouse requires grow lights and heat all the time. Whereas a greenhouse takes advantage of ambient light and heat.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So getting back to the use classifications, and we talked a little bit about nurseries and garden centers, and Chair Silberman kind of started bringing up some of the requirements at the state level related to cannabis nurseries. We did, we do propose an amendment to the use classifications for the city's use classification for nurseries and garden centers to align with the state law. And that's basically being explicit that current cannabis nurseries can only produce clones and mature plants and seeds and related types of products. One change that is shown in the red in this slide, that was not included in your packet, we realized the need to also just be explicit that cannabis nurseries are only allowed to sell wholesale instead of retail as well. So that's an amendment that's not reflected in your staff report that we're proposing. So moving on from the use classifications, the slide shows the proposed permitting requirements. The permitting, the uses are kind of focused on being allowed in these industrial districts. So we have the IA Industrial Arts, IL Light Industrial, IH Heavy Industrial, and IP Industrial Professional zoning districts as well as the General Commercial/Industrial, GCI zoning district. So these are the districts where cannabis, commercial cannabis activity would be allowed. And kind of following in the same line of thinking as with the use classifications, we really wanted to try to fit within the existing framework of the zoning ordinance, not reinvent the wheel. So we are leaving the permitting requirements for any use classification where we're embedding these cannabis activities. Those permitting requirements would remain the same. As you can see on the slide, in most of these industrial districts, it's a, these uses are permitted. There's a few where the use requires a minor use permit, and there's definitely some where the use is prohibited.
So, so some of these permits are discretionary permits and some are permits as of right?
That's correct. And we'll get into the, under the Health and Safety Code, there's a discretionary permit required for any cannabis commercial activity. So although it might be a ministerial permit in the zoning ordinance, there is a discretionary permit process for, under Health and Safety Code.
What, Mr. City Attorney, what environmental review did we do on this ordinance?
The staff report reflects using SB 90, I'm sorry, the CEQA exemption, that's an SB 94, for adopting regulations. So SB 94 explicitly states that adopting regulations for commercial cannabis activity do not require CEQA review as long as there's later discretionary review at the permit level.
Yeah, but that's why I was asking whether the permits were discretionary or as of right. So we have permits that are as of right. So how are we doing CEQA review for those?
There's a, I think it's written, there's a discretionary permit under Health and Safety Code, and the CEQA review would happen through that permit process.
The state permit?
The city's Health and Safety...
Chapter 8 requires a permit for one of these. So there is a discretionary permit. It may not be a zoning permit, but there's a Health and Safety.
So they're going to have to do a full, theoretically, a full EIR?
Well, it's, I think we'll have to do, I mean, theoretically, if it was a really large facility and it had a lot of impacts that we'd need to study, yes, but normally, I think it's going to be in an existing building, and it will be, we'll have to evaluate and do an initial study and work our way through the process.
So where are those discretionary permits going to? Are they going to the Planning Commission, or are they going to, are they being done at the staff level?
They would be, under Health and Safety, they'd be at the staff level.
The zoning administrator?
Oh, ZA, that's right. The zoning administrator would be handling it first. And then there'd be appeal. My last review of this was the appeal would come up to here to the Planning Commission.
David, if you can hear me, I had the same concerns. I was under the impression from our last meeting that, when I specifically asked about the discretionary use permits, I was under the impression that a cannabis business wouldn't be permitted by right under any zoning circumstances and that we would have discretionary view. But I guess now I'm hearing that that's not the case, and I'm wondering how staff or the consultants came to decide this different route.
Sure. Yeah, okay. Okay.
So the discretionary permit that we're talking about is a commercial cannabis business permit. That permit is required for any cannabis business that starts here, and the idea is that in your MUP processes, and oftentimes in CUP processes, the revocation or the stopping of one of the businesses requires a lengthy appeals process. So the commercial cannabis business permit is also required, it's issued by the city in order for the business to operate. The revocation on that is typically much simpler than it is on a CUP or an MUP, which has built-in processes. But as part of that process, it is a discretionary permit. It is done as by the zoning administrator. But at this point, and I know that the council has added some different direction, but the appeal would go to the Planning Commission and then likely, I assume, to the council after that. I mean, take the normal steps that would go through the appeals of that particular permit. So there is a separate discretionary permit that is issued called a commercial cannabis business permit in the Health and Safety portion of the ordinance. Does that help?
Yeah, I'm trying to keep my lawyer hat off today, so it's certainly responsive.
Do, does the Planning Commission have any other, have we ever reviewed any other discretionary business permits as an appellate board?
Well, you are the longest-standing Planning Commissioner by one year. I can, I can say that with one year's less history, the answer is no.
I can't recall either, but...
Yeah, I mean, I certainly don't recall doing it. I'm wondering if historically, though, that precedes me.
Basically, what Angela is observing is that this seems to require a, an appeals process that is new or unique in that previously, business license permits didn't get appealed to the Planning Commission, and that's a...
Yes.
That is a, that is a accurate observation.
That is, and I think the, our consultants, I think, said it fairly well that the, a use permit is a right that will run with the land, and I think the due process standards that apply to that are different than a discretionary permit that could, that by its terms can be revoked for a violation. And then the appeals process... And then the, the appeals process, I think, working with staff, we were thinking, because there's an overlay of zoning and issues here, that it would be appropriate that the Planning Commission here, after the zoning administrator, hear the appeal because that's the, the other standing body that we have in the city. And then ultimately, the, the last version, I was just informed, we did include a provision that the final appeal would be to the City Council.
And staff understands they're gonna have to do an initial study for every single permit that it issues and, and ultimately do whatever environmental review is required by that initial study? I mean, that, that seems, that seems unusual, not something that I have observed the city doing. But I mean, if staff-
Well, that's, I think that's the way it's set up because if, if you're right on the discretionary permit issue that we have to do SEQA, that would be the step that we would do it. That would be the discretionary decision allowing the business, so.
I mean, as a, as a layperson, my understanding is that environmental, either it needs to be a discretionary permitting process with SEQA review per project, or it needs to be a permit as a right with SEQA review at the time of the adoption of the ordinance. And it seems like we have, we have opted for the, the first option, which is fine. It just seems like it puts a, a not insignificant burden on staff and potentially could mean that certain projects of certain size are gonna require an EIR, which isn't a bad thing. It just is a, an expensive and time-consuming thing.
And it's a very, it's an excellent point, but in, this is a whole new world here, this, this type of regulation. And I think it would have been impossible, maybe I'm overstating it, but it would be extremely difficult to analyze every building in the industrial area for, for the purposes of, of this ordinance, to figure out what the impacts of all the different types of businesses that could be included in the ordinance. So I think we opted for the discretionary permit environmental review.
I just, I would add, I think it, it, there, there can be some benefit, it can be a, maybe a more conservative approach to and give you a little more authority or review power for future individual projects. And that might be something that the city would find, you know, put you in a more comfortable place looking, looking at this new area of land use.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, can I get some clarification on the SEQA evaluation? I'm not quite sure where we drew the assumption that we would do an initial study for permitted uses within this.
I mean, I would defer to the City Attorney maybe at a different time, but my, but my anecdotal understanding is that if you are doing a discrep, you have a choice between either a discretionary scheme or an as-of-right scheme. And if you choose a discretionary scheme, there has to be, every single time you do something, it is a, an action requiring some level of SEQA review.
Yes.
Because it's a project. Everything you do is a project.
Yes, but if you look at the proposed amendments here, I'm just concerned because I think that in, where it says M, that means minor use permit, right? So that is a discretionary review. But where it says P, that means permitted. So those do not require an, an environmental assessment.
Yeah, that was my, that was my concern, but this seems like-
They don't.
Well, yes, I, I would agree. Normally, when it says P, it means as of right, which is why I asked whether we'd done environmental review. Because it, my understanding, which could be wrong, is, is that if you are allowing uses as of right, this is the project. This, this ordinance is the project requiring-
Yes, that's correct.
-requiring environmental review.
Yes.
So what's the, what level of environmental, it's a rhetorical question-
That is done for this. And what I, I thought, I just wanna clarify because this, this is very important meeting because it sets up the whole process. And as we go forward to the City Council, we wanna make sure that, you know, this is a good commission to work these kinds of issues out. So as the Director, you know, from a resource standpoint, you know, you're bringing up some really, really good issues and, and plus your experience at the county level is, you know, instructive. So, but I wanna be very clear about this moving forward because if we're unclear, that's something else that we don't wanna get wrong at the, at the council level. So what I heard the consultant saying, what I understand about the state law and Proposition 64 is they gave an exemption for these types of regulations so that we could move forward without an environmental impact report or a negative declaration for this particular instance. And I'd like to hear from the consultant to make sure that that's my, that my understanding is correct, that the state specifically legislated for this effect so that we didn't have to do an environmental impact report or neg deck for this. Is that correct?
That is correct with a caveat that, that those future uses require, or that, that there is a discretionary permit process for individual projects in the future. And so, and so that's where I think the, the issue is that we have permitted uses in zoning, but, but there is its discretionary process through Health and Safety. And so that's, that's where the, we feel the SEQA exemption applies from the state law.
Okay, good. Thank you.
But when you're doing that discretionary permit, there needs to be environmental review.
Yes. And so for instance, for a minor use permit, it's not necessarily in envi, or, it's, it starts with an environmental assessment where we look at the, we go through a checklist, right, to determine if there are impacts. And if we determine that there are, there could potentially be significant impacts, then we would do an initial study. But at that crossroad, if we determine no, there, there aren't going to be, then we would do a categorical exemption. Right? So it, it gives us some flexibility to make that determination, but yes, we would do, we do that for every minor use permit or use permit that we do.
Yes, and in this case, it'll have to be every business license as well.
Yeah, that's your, that's your point. Every, everyone's done. I don't understand that component of it, but.
Like I said, I mean-
We'll figure that one out, I guess.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So just to finish up on this slide, the, the, the lower two rows of the table are those new, new use classifications, so there were not existing permitting requirements established in the code. So we do propose that the micro-business type kind of align with the other activity types that are encompassed in micro-business. So it's shown as permitted in the GCI, IA, IL, and IH zones and prohibited in the IP zone. And again, as I mentioned, cannabis dispensary, that new use classification would be prohibited in all zones. So, and this is something I touched on earlier, there are other zoning districts outside of those industrial zones where some of these use classifications that are encompassing these cannabis activities are allowed, either permitted or permitted with a permit. And, and, and there are, and some of those other commercial mixed-use zones, that's not an area where the city would like to see that activity. So we do propose that some amendments to Chapters 18.05 mixed-use districts and 18.06 commercial districts to clarify that any commercial cannabis businesses that are encompassed in that use classification are prohibited. And that's done using a footnote in the use permitting table. Also, there are, is a relatively minor amendment to Chapter 18.20 about onsite parking. Basically, because we have a new use classification for micro-business, we added a parking requirement for that use based on the types of activities that are includes, included. And then finally, there's more extensive amendments to Chapter 18.23, Standards for Specific Uses and Activities. In that section, there's a, kind of a strikeout, or, sorry, an amendment to just be really explicit that commercial cannabis businesses are not allowed and, as a home occupation, and that's done in the home occupation section. There was currently, there is currently a section that addresses standards for medical marijuana collectives, and that entire section would be struck out. Any references to medical marijuana collectives in the code are proposed to be struck out to be replaced by these commercial cannabis regulations. And then we have these two new sections that I'll cover on the next two slides, providing standards for commercial cannabis businesses and personal cannabis cultivation. So this new section, 18.23.270, addresses uses specific to commercial cannabis businesses. It cross-references the Health and Safety Code that we've been talking about and the commercial cannabis business permit process that we talked about. Again, that's, that's a permit that's before the zoning administrator. It would be appealed to the Planning Commission. And that, as part of that permit process, it's subject, it has a, I'm, I'm gonna cover that actually in another slide. We'll go over the Health and Safety amendments. But, so in the zoning ordinance, this section also provides some operational, operational and performance standards for commercial cannabis businesses, including a 600-foot buffer to our zoning districts as well as a buffer to, that's 600-foot buffer to schools, daycare centers, and youth centers. Under the, for, for any cultivation activity, as we talked about earlier, it's required to be occurring indoors and not visible from the public right-of-way. We have references to the parking requirements, signage requirements. There are some signed permit exemptions in your current code, and we just specify that cannabis businesses cannot use that permit exemption. Noise, noise standards and including prohibition on using generators unless emergency. It references your screening requirements and also requires that, limits that onsite consumption can't occur and also limits that any users of the site are age 21-plus or older. So these are all really kind of focused on land use-related matters. As you see in your staff report, the Health and Safety Code has a much more extensive set of performance and operational standards that, that are really more about health and safety, so that you get a lot more detail in that section or a more extensive list of standards in that section. I'll cover that in the next, another slide. On personal cannabis cultivation, there's a short section that we are proposing to add, clarifying that a permit isn't required for personal cannabis. It defines it as up to six plants per dwelling unit. And the kind of main limitation is that it can't be visible from the public right-of-way. Okay, and so this last slide, or this, this final slide on the amendments just summarizes the, the other amendments to Chapter 8.09 and 5.04. So 8.09 is an existing chapter in your Health and Safety Code. It's currently, addresses medical cannabis cultivation from collectives. And so that would be entirely replaced by a new Chapter 8.09 that's entitled Regulation of Commercial Cannabis Activities. As we talked about, this, talk, this outlines a, a commercial cannabis business permit process or CCBP process. And that, that, the application for the CCBP requires that you've gone, you've checked with planning, you either have a zoning clearance statement, or if it requires a minor use permit, it requires that that application for the minor use permit has been submitted and deemed complete by the Planning Division. It includes, as, as Neil described, a kind of tailored revocation process as well as a selection process and city council-established fees and taxes. And as I started to, to delve into, there, there are more extensive set of operational standards related to health and safety in that chapter. The big topics that they cover are security, surveillance, lighting, odor control, and nuisances. And the other kind of more minor amendment to other section of your municipal code is an amendment to Chapter 5.04, which is your general business registration requirements. And this is really just about clarifying that a CCBP is required before you get your business registration certificate. It's mostly to make sure that all the different staff and the different departments understand the various requirements so somebody doesn't get their business registration certificate and think they can go ahead and get started without doing anything further. So it's just kind of safeguards. So as a summary here, we are requesting your action to adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council adopt the zoning ordinance amendments, which are shown in Attachment 1 to the staff report. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we are also requesting an additional change to the nurseries and garden centers use classification, just to clarify that wholesale, wholesale sales are, are only allowed, no retail sales. We talked about the environmental determination with, under SB 94. So there's no SEQA document that's included in your packet. And then finally, in terms of next steps, we're planning to go to the City Council on October 23rd, followed by a November 13th meeting for potential adoption. And if adopted, the ordinance would be effective 30 days after that date. And I think at this point Jill is going to present a few modifications to the findings and resolution.
Evening, Jill.
Jill.
So I think Tanya pretty much covered this, but I just wanted to draw your attention to a few edits we changed or, the findings were changed to match the chapter or section in our code that deals with the criteria for zoning amendments. We made general plan consistency findings, so before there were no actual findings provided, just to, except just to say that it's consistent with the general plan. And then, so we beefed up those findings. And again, like Tanya said, this would be the edit to the commercial use classification for nurseries and garden centers, may only sell wholesale. And I'm available for any questions. Martin is also here. And so is Tanya and Sonia and Neil from SCI.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff at this time?
I think selling only wholesale is a little vague. In other words, a nursery, anybody can say, buy for wholesale, buy wholesale instead of retail, pay less money. I think that's fraught with danger.
That's a good point.
You know, like, basically, there, there are-
Illegal net ratio.
There are flower, you know, places where if you just have a business license, you can go on and buy flowers and-
And the whole reason for making a distinguished, for distinguishing it is that in most cities, and this occurred up in the city of Shasta Lake, for instance, your land use classification for nursery says retail, and it said it also in the chart. However, the state license type does not allow them to sell whole, anything other than to another licensee. So even if they wanted to, and it was vague in your ordinance, by state law, a nursery can only sell to another licensed entity with a state license. So it wouldn't really make any difference. It can be clarified, but they won't be able to sell to an individual.
Thank you. My blood pressure just went down.
Any other questions for staff at this time?
I do have a question. In reference to the 600-foot buffer zone, I'm curious what buffer zones, if any, we have for alcohol-related businesses, particularly liquor stores or stores that make more than 50% of their profits from liquor?
Hi, Angela. This is Lisa Porras. We don't have any buffers from, from businesses that sell alcohol, nor would we, do we have them from, like a standalone bar or nightclub. We don't have buffers for those particular types of uses.
Okay. So I, I mean, you know, seeing a 600 buffer, it seems a little inadequate, but I guess given the fact that we don't have any buffers for alcohol-related businesses, I, I'm starting to see, to understand the thinking there. Thank you.
So I had a quick question too. When we're talking about the appeal of the denial, I don't see in, in the report anywhere that it says that the City Council's the last, I see Planning Commission, but I don't see anything else. Is that, that gonna be added on or?
There's still, that part is still, it's been an iterative process to determine what the final appeal would be within the city. So this will come before the City Council and we'll be presenting it with the final appeal being the City Council. It would be ZA to Planning Commission to City Council.
However, if-
But we're making, aren't we making a recommendation?
You should make that very clear. If that's what the commission's will is, that you would like that to happen, please make it part of your motion.
Okay. I don't know if that is or not, but I just wanted to point, it does not say that, so. I don't know if that is or not, but I just wanted to point, it does not say that, so...
Right. Any other questions for staff at this time? Is there anyone, I don't have any speaker slips, I'm assuming there's no public comment? If you'd like to make public comment, if you'd come on up?
Good evening, planning commission. My name is Sean Kelly-Rye. I'm a lobbyist for the industry. I have several clients in the area, actually, that operate in and around the area. The only thing that I just, and this is probably nothing you can really take care of, this is more of a city council issue, is the complete denial that there is retail sales that exist today in San Carlos. It's as though you want to produce it, you want to provide all the wholesale resources, you want all these jobs and all this revenue, but you want to push off the retail component and any negative impacts on other cities. It's just like the city that says that they like high-speed rail, that they love lots of housing, and that they love all these other wonderful things, but want to push it in some other city. And so it's just, something that should be thought of, is retail sales exist now, and they exist in the form of illegal delivery services. And there's no sort of thought, or any sort of acknowledgement, that that is existing right now. And it's not because retail delivery stores, delivery services are like ice cream trucks. They are not cars just driving around with product, selling, once they put their bells and whistles on. These are customers in San Carlos, at residences, near schools, near other sensitive receptors, that are asking for this product to be brought to their home. And so, I mean, there's the tracks issue there, and you don't have to like cannabis, and that's fine. That issue is for yourselves to decide, but you should at least take that revenue. And if you don't like cannabis, you should take 100% of that revenue and give it to the police department, and enforce against illegal activity. You're doing neither. You're trying to get some revenue from some jobs, and you're not dealing with any of the retail aspect whatsoever, positive or negative. And I just, as you move forward, somebody has to look at those retail delivery sales. You may not be ready for a storefront. Other cities are not ready for storefronts. But even Redwood City is thinking about and looking at retail delivery sales. Mountain View just looked, had a conversation with their staff, and is going to look at having an ordinance with storefronts, with retail delivery sales, and the other components of the industry. So is...
Did you see Section 8.09.080?
I don't have it in front of me.
I mean, it's regulating delivery. It's not allowing delivery to originate in San Carlos, but it doesn't prohibit delivery from coming into San Carlos. And to the extent the city wanted to enact a tax, it could recover the sales tax from those deliveries, right?
No, they can't. A tax would be from where it originates, the point of sale. That would be at the city that actually originates. So actually, all you're saying is, it can come from elsewhere, and that's okay, and we're fine with that. And that's probably something you can't really enforce against anyway, frankly. It's problematic, and at low priority, from what I understand, speaking with the sheriff. But there are businesses here that are already delivering, and so you're going to force them, and their customer, and their employees, to have to go to San Jose, possibly. And just delivering from San Jose to San Carlos is just not going to work, even without traffic. Takes you 40 or 50 minutes to get here, and that's fine.
They can come from Pacifica. They're going to allow them in Pacifica, so...
Okay, well, it's a policy decision you can make. I mean, if you don't want to acknowledge the fact that, but what you're going to do is create an illegal market for yourselves, then that's fine. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
And Chair Silberman.
Yes. Discussion among the commission.
I mean, there's a lot to consider. I guess my initial concern is, and maybe this is more of a question, but the concerns I had the last meeting, odor control, environmental impacts, including runoff, and possible dangers created during manufacturing, are those appropriately addressed in the health and safety code?
So odor control is addressed by the ordinance, and it requires that odor be controlled such that it can't be smelled outside of the location.
Right.
As far as, as far as safety is concerned, well, I guess we'll see when the state regulations actually get approved, because they haven't been approved yet. But there are, there are measures within the state, my understanding is there are measures within the state regulations that are intended to deal with concerns in the I mean, I'll just jump in. I'm going to vote no. I want to observe that I can tell that staff and the consultants did an enormous amount of work. They tried really, really hard. My concern is timing, more than anything else. This is, I think someone wise, may have been Mr. Seve, made some sort of references being a brave new world, or a dynamic environment, and it's both. We don't know. I mean, we don't know what's going to happen. The new cannabis czar has expressed reasonable trepidation about what's going to happen. They don't have approved regulations yet. There's concern as to whether the state is going to be able to issue permits in, on January 1, as they intended. And I could absolutely see doing, allowing, and regulating some commercial cannabis regulation, commercial activity, if we were presented with some sort of articulated rationale as to why doing it now, versus waiting to see what happens in six months or a year, was articulated. And this is not an issue of access to cannabis. I believe everybody should have access to cannabis. As the consultant observed, if you go to weedmap.com, you will find 50 delivery services within 10 miles of here delivering cannabis, every single strain that you could possibly imagine. And it doesn't appear, although, I'd leave it to the city attorney to determine whether we could prohibit that. It doesn't appear that there is a desire to prohibit. People can get cannabis. That's not the issue. The question is whether or not the city wants to somehow benefit from other commercial cannabis activity. And I haven't seen an articulation about how it's going to benefit, how much it's going to be, and why doing it now, rather than waiting to see what happens in a year from now, after the regulations are written, and we have an opportunity to see what's happened in various jurisdictions, why it can't wait till then. I mean, if that were articulated, to me, I would absolutely vote yes. I just haven't, I haven't seen that articulation, and that's not in any way a criticism of staff. This is a brand-new world. Everyone, you know, is scrambling to try and get something in place by January 1st, and I totally get that. But I think that I would probably recommend, I can't today, but I'd recommend that the city extend its moratorium for some period of time, and see what happens. You know, let the jurisdictions that are going to experiment with this, like San Francisco, and San Jose, and Oakland, let's see what happens. Let's see whether they have a, you know, a Denver-type experience, or a, you know, or a Portland-type experience, and see what works and what doesn't work. Let the state get its regulations in place, and then do something. Or if there's some small amount that we want to regulate now, because we can articulate how we're going to benefit, like, you know, there's some particular big producer who wants to provide significant benefits to the city, and come in, and we want to regulate to allow them to do that, because we can articulate the benefit to the city, you know, go for it. But, you know, until that benefit can be articulated, I don't, I don't see why the city would be, you know, be an experiment unless, you know, unless it dealt with access. And this, none of this ordinance actually, as I can see, is going to significantly impact access for the residents of San Carlos. So while I am very appreciative of the hard work that staff and the consultants have done, I'm going to vote no.
Chairman, the, I think the timing issue is dictated by the licenses that may be, may or may not be ready on January 1st. And there, just to correct the record, San Carlos does not have a moratorium. We did not get any direction from our council to do a moratorium. So this is the regulations and the rules that are intended to be proactive, to deal with what's coming January 1st. But that is an option that the council could have if, and they still could have, there's still time to do a moratorium, but that's not the direction that staff has gotten.
Understood.
I guess I'm more of an optimist than Mr. Chair at this point.
I've never been accused of that.
But I do want to say this, as a psychologist, I did an internship 20-some years ago, and had a post-doc fellowship in a medical clinic in Oakland where I was carjacked. It was a...
I didn't know that story was going that way. You got me.
That's another story.
All right.
Our medical clinic was dispensary for methadone for heroin users. And so I had a lot of patients, everyone, all the patients used heroin, but I have a book full of stories about marijuana use, and heroin use, and crack, and everything else in between. So I take this various, very seriously. I've lived in this city for 33 years. I believe it's the city of good living. I want to keep it that way. I would oppose this from the start if the council was interested in proposing retail sales. I don't want pot stores in San Carlos. So as this gentleman said, we're ignoring that people can deliver here. That doesn't make it right. We shouldn't permit illegal activity. But I'm willing to bring up the motion and see where it goes.
So we have two options, basically, so...
Well, there's three. I mean, we can, we can recommend adoption as it is. We can recommend that it not be adopted.
Those are three, yeah.
Or we could recommend adoption with changes. And I would observe that if, you know, if we do recommend adoption, you know, I would suggest that staff consider, well, one, from a, just an administrative standpoint, there are places where, it refers to the sheriff's department, it's the sheriff's office, and there are certain times that it refers to, you know, the police versus the sheriff. That probably should be just cleaned up. And then, you know, one, another thing that could be considered is, you know, adding some additional environmental aspects to this. Indoor cultivation requires a great deal of energy. You know, the city can consider requiring certain amounts of renewable energy versus, you know, dirty energy. It could, you know, consider requiring certain amounts of water reuse. It could consider requiring solar panels on warehouses that do this. I mean, it, I'm sure that it could, it could consider a lot of different things that would, would improve the environmental footprint of these operations if there is an intent to adopt this.
Angela, since we can't see you?
I am waving my arms furiously. I'm kidding. Yeah, I agree with David about the indoor cultivation requiring a really large amount of energy consumption, which is, which is why, looking back on David's comment about mixed light, mixed light facilities, and being able to take advantage of ambient light, I sure wish the city council would reconsider that, or explain more about the justifications of why that's not being considered, or use other environmental incentive options, water reuse, solar, things of that, of that ire. I mean, I still have concerns about how and when SEQUA is triggered. I'm not, I appreciated the explanation from staff earlier, but I'm still a little confused on that. And then I'm also concerned about the legitimacy of the planning commission's role in the business permit appeal process, but I understand the thinking of the consultants in regards to that. I guess, I guess from my understanding, if I'm understanding this correctly, discretionary permits as a business permit won't go through the land and are easier to revoke if there are violations, and that's the reason we're pursuing that option. Am I right in thinking that?
Yes.
So I think those are, those are my comments for now.
I mean, if someone, if someone could make a motion at this point, or...
Yeah, so where do we go from here? Because it doesn't sound like alternative number one is, is going to fly.
Improving it with changes? I don't know. It sounds like there might be, I don't know where you're voting. There could be three votes. I mean, I'm only one vote. We can, I mean, we could just make the motion to adopt it as it is, and then see how the vote goes.
Okay. Do we want to...
Or make a motion to adopt it with changes, and see how that vote goes. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't feel strongly about it.
So discussion-wise, how do you guys feel about the final appeal of denial to add to city council?
Well, that's, I mean, that's city council's call, whether they want to be the final appeal. It's not, I mean, it's, you can, I think that, well...
It's a recommendation you could make, or choose not to make.
I guess getting back to the question, how do you guys feel about that?
I'd be okay with recommending that, Jesse, if that's where, where you're headed.
So what other additional changes, it sounds like? It sounds like...
Well, you know, just clean up on the, on the references to the sheriff's office, and then maybe to consider additional, maybe just keep it vague, and have, you know, consider additional requirements with respect to decreasing the environmental footprint of operations, something like that.
You're the master of the, of the...
I mean, I'll make the motion and vote against it. I don't care. Where's the, where's the motion? Can someone put the motion up?
There is no motion on the presentation. However, if you look at page five, there are, you can use the alternative as a motion. For example, you move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt amendments to Title 18 of zoning, at the bottom of page five.
So I guess I move that the commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt the amendments to Title 18 zoning of the San Carlos municipal code, as shown in Attachment 1, Exhibit A, to the staff report, with the additions that it clean up, references to the sheriff's office, that it provide for a final appeal to the San Carlos city council, and that staff make additional recommendations with respect to reducing the environmental footprint of cannabis businesses. That would be my motion.
I'll second, I'll second then.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Just before the rec, before you vote, there was one other question about the wholesale issue, and it might be that you would want to clarify that, to say wholesale to other licensed cannabis businesses.
Oh, there you go.
I would, I would ask to be able to make, A, an amendment to my own motion, adding that clarification to the definition of wholesale.
And I'll second that as well.
All right. With the new amended motion seconded, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
And Chair Silberman?
Passes three to one, see? I was an optimist. Next up is a report on recent city council actions. Are there any reports on, Al Seve is shaking his head, no.
There are none to share this evening.
There are, are there any planning commission comments or reports? I have none. Angela, what, what are you drinking?
I have one.
Did I lose Angela?
Angela, what are you drinking?
Is that it? Is that it?
Is she there?
She's gone.
It's not a flat white, what, anything? Okay. All right. Any other?
I saw our planning director and several planners attending the American Planning Association of California conference in Sacramento last week. Nice to see you all there.
Did you learn anything that you've brought back to edify us?
Planning is controversial.
Yeah.
Complicated.
Yeah.
And compromising.
Yeah. The three Cs of, of planning, all right.
Ammonistic.
Yeah. Correspondence, the only thing I saw was a September 20 letter to me. I don't know, was it sent to anybody else regarding eucalyptus trees? I guess we make that part of the, the record. I didn't, there was no other correspondence, right, staff?
None other than what was on the dius this evening.
Yep. And then, any planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects?
Yes. At the last Planning Commission hearing, I noted at the end of the agenda that the next Shack meeting was scheduled for Thursday, October 5. That meeting has been canceled to a date to be determined, so...
Pleased to hear that, because I had a conflict, so.
Okay.
Good. Do you know when the next one will be?
We don't have makeup date yet, but we still are aiming for perhaps later this month or early November. So we're still working out some details in preparation of that meeting. So I just wanted to note for the record, in case anyone might be watching, that there is not a Shack meeting on Thursday, October 5. I believe on October 9, we are still scheduled for a study session with the city council on daycare. I'm getting a nod, yes for Martin. That's on the city council's agenda. And then at the next Planning Commission meeting, we have two items on the agenda. One is actually a single-family residence, but the reason it's coming to the Planning Commission is because it needs a creek exception setback. So the Planning Commission will get to look at yet another home. I believe you recall you looked at another one of these cases before, but that's the only reason it's coming to you. And then the next item on the agenda is an application for a new billboard at 815 American. So that will be before you as well. And those are the only two items that we have for the next meeting on October 16. And that's all I have.
Awesome.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps not under this title, but I just wanted to let the commission know that in terms of learning more about cannabis and how it will affect the future of our cities, I'm the chair of the Bay Area Planning Directors Association, and we put on educational sessions twice a year, and on the 13th of October, we'll be doing our fall session called Cannabis in the City: Navigating the Regulatory Environment and Community Expectations for Cannabis. And I'm going to go ahead and forward you the flyer for that. And Neil Hall will be one of the speakers at the event. We'll have the city of Berkeley, the city of Oakland, the city of Santa Fe talking about their experiences, because they have more mature experiences with cannabis. We'll have a dispensary owner from San Jose, from Elemental Wellness, the senior vice president of operations. We'll have a lobbyist in the political realm, and we'll have an attorney from Myers-Navey. So it's going to be a really robust discussion and a learning experience to learn about at least some people's experience in some direction in this area. And again, I'll forward it to you if you're interested.
Thanks. If there's nothing else, the meeting is adjourned at 8:30.